Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Mayor Glassell is unfortunately unable to attend tonight, so I'll be calling a meeting to order. This is our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, July 20, 2021. And if you would please, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll now do roll call.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum. David Reed. Anthony Russo. And Mayor Glassell is absent, but that's a quorum.
And are there any changes to the agenda? I don't believe there are any changes to our agenda. Now is our time for our call for public comment, and public comment time is for items that are not on our agenda. And if we have any one mission to make public comment, we'll read all of the relevant information. And seeing none, or Mr. White. So I'll read all of this really quickly. The call for public comment, agenda line on is a time when concerned members of the public community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate, personal attacks or disagreements, personnel or employment matters. The use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local laws and shall not be permitted. Mr. White.
Randy White, 535 Cobb Drive, Montrose. And I don't have prepared remarks this time, but I'm going to go extemporaneously here. And I'd like to speak about the intersection at 550 and Chupita. That intersection is designed well, but marked poorly. The markings there essentially allow a non-attentive northbound traffic to generate three lanes northbound. Because there is white marks that are on the pavement, and it's meant to split between a left-turn lane and a through lane on the right with nobody in the center. I've personally observed three lanes northbound during busy times because we have people that are using that intersection northbound that are unfamiliar with it. And the markings are not very obvious. So what's going to happen sooner or later without obvious markings and without something vertical in there to gather the attention of the northbound traffic? There's going to be somebody making a turn from Chupita to go northbound in their appropriate lane, and they get slammed by one of the three vehicles going northbound at that intersection. It's only a matter of time. Murphy's Law says if it can happen, it will happen. Hasn't happened yet, but it's coming. Now, what I would like to do is to send a diagram and a video capture of that to an appropriate person for consideration and action now. I know you're not allowed to speak, but I will send an email to David Reed, and if you could reply with the appropriate direction for that, I would appreciate it. That's all I have. No potato, no shirt. But I do have a great admiration for this council and the staff that sit here. And the more I get to know you, the better I like it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. For the city council consideration of the minutes of the July 6, 2021 special meeting, and July 6, 2021 regular city council meeting. And I would entertain a motion for that approval.
I move that we approve the minutes of the July 6, 2021 special meeting and the July 6, 2021 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next is item seven on our agenda, which is Resolution 2021-11. City Council Consideration of Resolution 2021-11. A resolution of the city council of the city of Montrose, Colorado, approving the filing of a grant application with the History Colorado State Historical Fund in order to fund rehabilitation of the Montrose Potato Growers Association Building, and directing the city manager and city staff to perform all steps necessary to execute the grant agreement with History Colorado State Historical Fund and enter into an agreement with High Oasis LLC upon a grant award. And to speak to that will be Community Program Manager Kendall Kramer.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, city councilors. Yes, I'm here before you tonight requesting your consideration of a resolution to file a grant application with History Colorado State Historical Fund on behalf of High Oasis LLC. We're looking to apply for up to $250,000. This year, the grant ceiling for this project has, or this round has risen by $50,000. That being said, this is a very competitive process, or very competitive round. We just talked today and learned that there's about 80 to 90 applications that will be submitted during this round. So it's very competitive and probably only about half the amount of funding for those projects. Grant funds will be used for stabilization and rehabilitation of the Montrose Potato Growers Association Building here on West Main Street, looking to rehabilitate the historic decks around the building, specifically the east and west decks. Do restoring, or excuse me, rehabilitating the doors and windows. Steel H-frame reinforcement at the door openings. You've seen the historic doors that are on there, the big barn doors, those will also be restored. And of course, masonry reboarding. As a private entity, High Oasis LLC, represented by David and Greg Fisherings, they must provide a one-to-one match or 50% of the total project cost. The total project cost is anticipated to be $550,381. Their match will be $300,381, and those are estimates. But again, the grant would be up to $250,000, and they would be providing the rest. The Montrose Potato Growers Association Building has served a vital role in our community and making Montrose the regional hub for agriculture. It was completed in 1908, but since the 1960s has been, remained underutilized, and it fell into disrepair until High Oasis and the Fisherings purchased that building. It is one of the most iconic structures in our community. I hear a lot of support for this project and a lot of hope to see it restored. Since the Fisherings have purchased the building, they've put a lot of investment into it. They've spent about $435,000 to stabilize it. They've replaced the roof, the floor, and the associated support system in the basement area. The construction documents for this project have been completed, which will be really helpful with our grant application. I should also note that there was a north addition of the building that was beyond repair, and that, and it was not original to the building, and it has since been demolished. So this is a repeat application, and that was one of the concerns last year or the previous time we applied was that north addition. And so that has been since demolished, and we are moving forward, anticipate to move forward with this application. If awarded, the city of Montrose will enter into a MOU with High Oasis for the completion of this project. High Oasis will be required to provide invoices and copies of paid receipts in order to be reimbursed to the State Historical Fund, or by the State Historical Fund. Again, this project has been procured already. We procured that earlier this year in accordance with the city's procurement policy. Stryker &amp; Company, Inc. was selected. They submitted the loan bid to complete this project, and that bid or that contract is contingent upon a grant award from the State Historical Fund. The city of Montrose will not be providing direct cash for this project. However, I will be providing grant administration, similar to the other projects that we've done. For example, CDBG, if we partner with Habitat for Humanity, Center for Mental Health, or any of our nonprofits, we always typically do the grant administration for that and help them through that process. So my time will be used for that. All of the proposed work for this project has been approved by the city's Historic Preservation Commission. That was approved last year in March, March 2020. And all the work that will be completed will be completed to the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties Standards for Rehabilitation. The resolution before you tonight allows for the filing of the grant application in an amount up to $250,000, and directs the city manager and cities, and city staff to perform all steps necessary to execute a grant agreement with History Colorado State Historical Fund in the event that we get a successful award. We anticipate, again, that we will hear back by fall. The grant application deadline is due August 1st, so coming up very quickly. With that being said, David Fisherings is also here tonight if you have any other questions, or I can take questions as well at this time. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, I have a question or confirmation, really. So from an expense standpoint, there is no added expense or extra expenses to the city in this project. We are just there to administer and to assist with this process as a sponsor, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Fisherings, would you like to make any comments?
David Fisherings, 2682 Stellar Court. Just, I mean, you guys already know that Kendall's awesome, but just to reiterate it, he's awesome. And we wouldn't be here, you know, I wouldn't be in front of you. We wouldn't be talking about this. It wouldn't even be put together without his, all the work that he's put into this. So we're, we're on the home stretch here. Basically, like next week, we're trying to get this thing submitted, so almost there. And, you know, thank you for your support. And just for the record, Anthony, you kind of hit on it, but just to reiterate that, you know, we act, we can't do this without the city because the city's acting as a pass-through for state money. But it's not the city's money that's coming to, to us as a private entity. And we also are, you know, putting in half of whatever we end up requesting from the state as our own funding, so. But yeah, thank you for your consideration and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Now accept public comment. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-11 as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number eight. The Youth City Council Manual Update. Consider updates to the manual for the city council of Montrose Youth City Council. And will be a presentation by Youth City Council Coordinators, Michaela Unram and Kaylee Roten. Feels cool to say that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Frank. So before you tonight, we have the proposed revisions to the Youth City Council Manual, as well as the changes to the scholarship program. So this is the same manual that was presented at the July 6 work session. No changes have been made from that time. But Kaylee and I will just give you a quick refresher of what we are proposing and those changes. So Kaylee, do you want to start?
Am I able to pull it up onto the screen? Thank you, Michaela. Good evening, city council. So as Michaela stated, we made no changes from work session. And the first change that we did have was in the Official Roles and Responsibilities section. If you go down, you'll see where Communications Coordinator and Marketing Coordinator are located. In previous terms, we had just a Communications Coordinator. We were informed by this year's Youth City Council that it was a lot of work for just one person. So we were able to split that into two separate positions, which included an additional opportunity for a leadership role. The biggest difference is that Communications will be formulating more of that PIO position, and Marketing will be more with the social media aspect of our youth council for hopefully these coming terms. Apart from that, I'm going to pass it back to Michaela for her to go over scholarship funds.
Sure, so the biggest change that we are proposing is to that scholarship program. And this would be a change from the existing program, where students who complete all of the requirements would earn a $250 scholarship per term, and moving that more towards an evaluation standard where they could earn up to $500 per term, depending on the roles they choose to take on and how much they choose to participate in the program. And so Kaylee, if you want to pull up the rubric on that, we can go over the details a bit further.
Thank you, Michaela. So with this rubric, it looks very familiar. It is based off of the PDEs that the city of Montrose uses for our staff here at the city. And this was to really increase more of that real-life experience. So all of the items listed on the left-hand side is based off of what their duties are for being on the Youth City Council for that current term. And that's going to be just a simple scoring of whether or not they don't meet their expectations, they meet, or if they go above and beyond, that gives them a chance to get more of a higher score. And we'll meet with them three times throughout the year. So we'll have our initial when we start. In the middle of the term, we'll meet to see how they're doing. And then at the end, well, that is what's going to ultimately decide. 60% of their score is this rubric for what their scholarship funds will be for that term. And I'm going to turn it back to Michaela to go over the core beliefs.
Thanks, Kaylee. So in line with the city staff PDE process, we wanted to include the city's core beliefs as 30% of that scholarship component, too, for the evaluation. We felt it's really important that we emphasize those with our students and show them those values of public service. And then if you want to go a bit further, we've also included SMART goals as part of it. So we think it would be really important that we increase the emphasis with our students on goal-setting, both in a professional and personal development piece. So that will be 10% of the evaluation. And as Kaylee mentioned, we'll meet with them multiple times throughout the year to set those goals and chart their progress. And all combined, these will go into a 4.0 evaluation scale. So as you can see, towards the bottom, we have the valuations broken out. And depending on how the students score throughout the year, their scholarship monies would be determined in those categories. And Kaylee, anything else to add on that? And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
One question I might have is for clarification. If you look back on your rubric, there are a couple blocks. And you explained this during our work session, but it might be nice for the public to understand. The two black blocks on there, why they're blacked out.
I would be happy to. So the two black blocks are going to be, one, with the officer role. And so that is regarding if they actually are going to be holding a leadership, leadership position that year. So Mayor, Mayor Protem, Communications, Marketing, Treasure and Secretary. If they choose not to, it's not going to penalize them, but this is just a chance for them to earn an extra point, as well as meeting attendance. So you can't go above and beyond for meetings. So whether or not you meet the standard or you don't meet the standard.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I would just like to say thank you for putting this together. I think you guys have done an outstanding job, so thank you.
And any public comment? Seeing none, I would approve a motion. I'm having trouble speaking all of a sudden. Like English is totally gone. Entertain a motion?
I will make a motion. I like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2546 on the second reading as presented. I'm sorry, sorry. Make a ordinance 2...
How about this? I'll jump in. You want me to jump in? I will make a motion to approve the updates to the City of Montrose Youth City Council Manual as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
That was, that was a tough one, I'll tell you what. Please vote. And we're missing one vote. Now, it's unanimous now. Thank you. We're having issues with all sorts of things today. All right, well, moving on to the next item, number nine, Ordinance 2546 on second reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2546 on second reading, and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado repealing Title VI, Chapter 1, Section 19, Prence 6-1-19 only regarding false identification. And to address that is our Assistant City Attorney, Matthew Magliar.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm here on an ordinance repealing one of our discrete code provisions, 6-1-19, false identification. This was presented at regular session on July 6th, and also work session June 14th. There are no differences between what's at the packet at bar before council now and what was presented in the past. This is a straight repeal. There's no replacement ordinance language sought, other than to indicate that the numbering for this offense is reserved. Again, staff has three rationales in support of recommendation for repeal of this particular ordinance. One, that it covers behavior that the state of Colorado legislature has criminalized as felony-level conduct because it's so broad. It covers about six different felony crimes, or six different statutes, four of them felony-level crimes, excuse me. The ordinance does set forth what we would call in the law a crime of dishonesty. And Montrose Municipal Court is not a court of record. Accordingly, convictions for this ordinance wouldn't report on the standard criminal background that the DA's office runs. As a consequence, attorneys would not know that this was available for use as impeachment evidence for either witnesses or defendants or victims. And lastly, the ordinance is not being used in practice. In the last two and a half years, it's only been used once. So for all those rationales, staff would recommend repeal respectfully, and we would request the council to pass this on second reading and available for any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay, I would accept public comment. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 2546 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously as well. Moving on to item 10. Ordinance 2547 on second reading. Council Consideration of Ordinance 2547 on second reading, and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, Designating the Denver and Rio Grande Depot, 21 North Rio Grande Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose Historic Property pursuant to 415 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And to address that is Planner 1, William Reese.
Thank you, and good evening. I have a presentation to share. So as stated, this is the second reading of ordinance 2547, Designating the Denver and Rio Grande Depot on the City of Montrose Historic Register. The city is the owner of this, the city is the owner of the building and thus is the applicant. We brought this application in front of the Montrose Historic Preservation Commission on June 22nd, where they voted unanimously to recommend approval. City Council considered and approved this ordinance on first reading on July 6th. This building is eligible for designation due to its age, being more than 50 years old. We also find it to be eligible due to its association with the history of transportation in Montrose, and the building's architecture makes it eligible as the design is representative of the Mission style, Mission Revival style of architecture common for railroad stations in this region. Montrose was first connected to the Denver and Rio Grande Network on September 8th, 1882, and has served as an important outfitting point for the mining camps in Yarray and San Miguel counties, as well as the agricultural areas close to Montrose. At first, there was just a simple frame building that served as a passenger depot, as you can see in this picture, from 1885. While upgrades were made to this building, the structure remained inadequate for the growing community. A group of local citizens, including Mayor John Allen, contacted officials from the railroad to express the need for a more suitable station. Horace Clark, who was the second vice president and general manager of the railroad, visited Montrose in June of 1911, and promised that a new depot building would be built within six months. Plans were for a 25-foot by 105-foot structure, and the building was constructed between December of 1911 to March of 1912. And this picture is from shortly after construction was completed in 1912, and served as an advertisement for the Denver and Rio Grande Railroad Company. You can see that the building looks very similar to how it does today. It's been very well-preserved. And this picture is from November 21st, 1951. And this was taken by Robert Richardson. And there's two trains visible here, a standard gauge locomotive 454 with the Mountaineer passenger train, and narrow gauge locomotive 784 with freight cars. And this picture was taken on March 21st, 1953, and this shows the last train leaving from Montrose going to Yarray. And the Ridgeway to Yarray segment was scrapped in October of that year. The railroad donated the building to the city in 1972 for use as a museum. As I also mentioned, the depot is constructed in the Mission Revival architectural style. This is evident in the hipped roofs with the red tile roofing and overhanging eaves, as well as the porch with thick pier supports and arched openings. You can see this on both the east facade and the west facade. They're almost mirror images of each other. Also, note the stepped parapet in the center with a curvilinear parapet directly above. The upper wall is covered with pebble-stucco with a projecting concrete lower wall, also characteristic of the Mission Revival style. And the south side has a one-story projection that serves as a port-cochere, which is a covered entrance large enough for vehicles to pass through. Staff finds that the Denver and Rio Grande Depot meets all eligibility and integrity criteria. As the owner, the city is the applicant, and the city agrees to comply with all codes and regulations pertaining to modifying or altering character, character-defining properties. Staff recommends approval for ordinance 2547 on second reading. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Accept public comment. Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt ordinance 2547 on second reading as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that also passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda item number 11, Ordinance 2548 on first reading. Consideration of Ordinance 2548 on first reading, and ordinance of the city of Montrose vacating a portion of Orchard Road within the city of Montrose. And once again, Planner 1, William Reese.
Thank you again. I'm filling in for Amy on this one, but I have a presentation to share as well. So as stated, this is the first reading for an ordinance vacating a portion of Orchard Road. This is the approximate location that you see in front of you. So this is just south of Waterfall Canyon subdivision on the west side of town. And this vacation is done, being done prior to the next filing of Waterfall Canyon. This proposed vacation is located along Orchard Road and is approximately, approximately 1.7 acres in size. Back in 1891, a 30-foot-wide future Orchard Road right-of-way between Sunset Mesa and Happy Canyon Creek was dedicated as part of the Orchard Platte. The western portion of that dedication continued to be farmed until the Waterfall Canyon subdivision was approved for construction in 2006. The approved subdivision of the Waterfall Canyon project proposed the following. The extreme western portion, approximately 1,250 feet, will be included in a new Orchard Drive widened to a 50-foot right-of-way and an open space tract centered on Happy Canyon Creek. The center 850 feet will be included in a, in a new 5.16 acre city park. And the eastern 400 feet will be included in two small HOA-managed open space tracks totaling 0.22 acres. The original Waterfall Canyon preliminary platte was renewed in, in, sorry, 2012, and again in 2017. And there are plans for another renewal later this year. This vacation is necessary to allow final plating, the creation of new residential lots, dedication of new city streets and parks, and the creation of HOA tracks. City staff recommends that council approve ordinance 2548...
Uh, city staff recommends that council approve ordinance twenty five forty-eight on first reading, which would authorize a portion of Orchard Road right-of-way vacation to the adjacent owner. Thank you.
One quick question I have is uh, that is for a point of clarification, that there are sections of this that, after the vacation and the replating process, that they will be re-dedicated as new streets, correct?
That's correct.
And also just to add as park as well. So the Orchard Road runs through the proposed park in Waterfall Canyon. And so um, there will be some that are totally vacated and then reincorporated as a dedication through the new park.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll hold a hearing. Open hearing. Are there any comment from the public? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. And entertain a motion to pass ordinance twenty five forty-eight.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to pass ordinance twenty five forty-eight on first reading as presented.
No second to that motion.
You have a motion and a second, please vote. And that also passes unanimously. Moving on to item number twelve, the Cerise Park Waterline Boar Contract Award. Consider an award of the contractor Ridgway Valley Enterprises in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred dollars for construction of the Cerise Park Waterline River Boar Project. And we don't have Mr. Murphy here.
He will be joining by Zoom.
I see he's on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Murphy, if you would.
Hey, Commander Pro Tem, and uh, apologies for not being there. I got double booked today, or tonight. Um, but uh, this is for the uh, Cerise Park Waterline Boar. Uh, this is uh, the final stage-
Heck of a prop.
What's that?
Just said that's a heck of a prop.
Yeah, with that prop on there, it's like, that's kind of cheating, isn't it?
Um, yeah, so final uh, piece of a three-part project. The city crews have been working to run a water line from the intersection of Chapita and Shane's Way on the northern entrance to Cerise Park. Um, down through the park, past the amphitheater, um, and then ultimately crossing in a river bottom park to uh, do a couple of things, increase reliability on the western side, um, increase thorough put on the western side of our water system, um, serve the amphitheater. Um, and also, yeah, just help with general resiliency in this area of the water system as we have uh, pretty limited crossings of the river itself. Uh, so the last part of this is getting underneath the river. It's the boar is near the water sports park. Did the design, went out for bid, had uh, four bidders ranging pretty solid range from two hundred and eleven thousand to six hundred and fifty-six. I think a lot of those uh, boars are pretty risky, especially when you start getting out of town subcontractors, um, pretty specialized work. Um, so it's not terribly uncommon to see that kind of spread. Uh, the low bidder was Ridge Valley Enterprises, the two eleven. Um, they have a lot of experience in these soils. Um, they were the only, as far as the actual drilling work itself, they were the only local contractor. Um, the other contractors on here are local, um, but we're using subcontractors from out of town to do the uh, specialty boring work. Um, Ridge Valley is considered qualified to perform the work. Um, the product itself will take place um, later in the fall. We're, we're bidding it now just to get the materials ordered, given some of the supply chain issues we've had. Um, but uh, the work itself, um, will take place after kind of the major season in the parks, um, before wind, before it gets too cold. But uh, um, we'll have uh, some isolated closures of Apollo Drive. But um, with River Bottom Drive um, complete now, they'll have a sufficient detour to get into the park. Um, then obviously, all of the businesses and access on Apollo Drive will remain open um, throughout this project. Uh, the bu- product itself was budgeted. Uh, we had two hundred thousand for this. Uh, about thirty-five thousand of that was used up uh, by the um, purchasing materials for the portions of the internal crews uh, we're using. So this did come in a little higher um, than anticipated. But uh, within the realm of expectation, given what the market's kind of been doing. Um, so uh, between that and uh, a balanced savings of other water capital fund projects, um, they have plenty of money to cover this one. And uh, the product will be done by the end of this year. So, um, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I, I just want to make a comment, which is we talked extensively when you presented this at work session about how bids can come in so different from one company to another. Um, and that, um, if anyone's more curious about that, that, that discussion is in that work session meeting, which is available to watch online.
And one of the other things we had discussed is that, um, we are very familiar with each one of the people that have submitted bids and that they are all very qualified for this project. So it wasn't that we had, the spread wasn't based on availability or their skills. So much it was availability of subcontractors. Any other questions?
Yep.
Accept public comment. Any public comment? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would make a motion to award a contract to Ridgway Valley Enterprises in the amount of two hundred and eleven, two hundred dollars as presented.
I second that.
You have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and congratulations on a beautiful baby.
Thank you.
And next, we have our sales use and excise tax report from our finance director, Shanie Wittenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Um, like Ann just said, it's gonna be hard to follow that. So I'm glad that everything on my report is um, green, so that'll help. Um, so let me share my screen with you. Seems like it's been forever since I've presented. It's only been a month. Alright, um, got everything lined up here. So this is the report from May twenty twenty-one as compared to the same time period in twenty twenty. General sales tax is collected at three percent. In May, compared to May of twenty twenty, retail sales tax is up eighteen point one percent. Construction use tax up two hundred and thirty-five point one percent. Use and auto use tax up eighty-one point eight percent with total collections up almost twenty-five percent. And a budget variance positive of thirty-two and a half percent. Year-to-date, retail sales taxes at twenty-three point two percent or about a million and a half dollars. Construction use taxes at thirty-seven point eight percent or about fifty-five thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax at fifty-nine point four percent or two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars with total collections up twenty-five point seven percent or just about one point eight million dollars. With a positive budget variance of thirty-three point one percent or two point two million dollars more has been collected through May than we budgeted in twenty twenty-one. Public safety, sales and use tax, this is a point five eight percent that was added to our tax by the voters in November of twenty nineteen, effective January one of twenty twenty. In May, we collected three hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars or thirty-one point seven percent more than we did in May of twenty twenty. Year-to-date, we've collected one point eight million dollars or thirty-two point four percent more than we did year-to-date in twenty twenty or four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Positive budget variance there, forty-five percent or approximately five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Montrose Recreation District, we're collecting point three percent for our partners there for the Community Recreation Center. In May, we collected two hundred and two thousand dollars or twenty-two point six percent more than we did in May of twenty twenty. Year-to-date collections, almost a million dollars, with that being twenty-five point two percent more than we did year-to-date in twenty twenty. Hotel taxes, we add point nine percent for hotel excise tax and point eight percent for restaurant excise tax. In May, hotel excise tax was up one hundred and twenty-nine point one percent, which is just amazing. Restaurant excise tax up twenty-seven point two percent, total collections up thirty-eight point seven percent, and a positive budget variance of fifty-three point four percent. I do believe that um, we've got a lot of people doing staycations and Montrose is a great place to do that. So, and I realize in May of last year, we were down quite a bit as far as hotel goes. Um, but I still, that was still kind of shocking to me. So it really proves that there are people in our state and probably surrounding states driving and staying here and doing all the wonderful things we have in our backyard. Year-to-date collections compared to twenty twenty, hotel excise taxes at fifty-eight point two percent or thirteen thousand dollars. Restaurant excise tax up twenty-seven point three percent or forty-five thousand dollars with total taxes up thirty-one point one percent or fifty-eight thousand dollars. There again, a positive budget variance of thirty-six point three percent or sixty-six thousand dollars. Hotel and restaurant was really hard to budget in twenty twenty-one, as you all kind of recall. Um, because of the pandemic, we just weren't sure. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that retailers um, agreed to give up back in nineteen ninety. And in May, we collected forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars or seventeen point two percent more than we did in May of twenty twenty with total collections year-to-date of two hundred and ten thousand dollars approximately or twenty-four point eight percent more or forty-two thousand dollars more than we did in twenty twenty. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments you all may have.
Questions? I would say for myself, uh, it's very heartening to see that rebound on the restaurants and hotels. That seeing a hundred and twenty-eight percent is staggering. But uh, just seeing the twenty-seven point three increase in the, the hope, restaurant excise means that our restaurants are actually starting to hopefully equalize a little bit.
Yeah, and the restaurants definitely weren't hit quite as hard as the hotels in twenty twenty. But um, yeah, it's nice to see that people are eating out and people are coming to the community, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other staff that would like to speak, make a report, tell us what's going on? Chief Hall?
Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, I just wanted to, um, I was reminded today actually um, by uh, Councilwoman Bynum about the program that we're, we're uh, working together and trying to institute with Region Ten. And this is a program primarily focused to seniors who are having issues with weeds, maybe with other, you know, uh, possibly code, something that would rise to the level of a, a city code enforcement issue. And so currently, we're working through an IGA with Region Ten uh, to potentially trade services. Um, along with um, Region Ten uh, creating a brochure that our code enforcement officer will be able to hand out, not just to uh, seniors, but to anyone that uh, she may come in contact. And uh, trying to work out a program where uh, that individual has the opportunity to call Region Ten and, and try to work out services if they qualify for, for those services. So, um, that's coming along well and, and we're uh, we're kind of in the finishing stages of that. But I wanted to just maybe promote Region Ten as it, they're kind of a, a little-known secret. I mean, it, you know, I, I think um, it's important to um, to at least let everyone know that they're out there. And uh, that starts with their phone number, which I had up and then now it's gone. So, it's uh, two four nine, two four three six. And I think the important thing to note here is that you don't have to have a code enforcement issue to then suddenly decide, hey, I need to call them for services. If you're having issues with uh, those types of things, um, and you qualify for services, you can call them ahead of time. It's two four nine, two four three six and speak with Eva Veach. So, and I, I can answer any questions if you have it.
I think this is one of those silver lining kind of things, because the event that actually triggered this, while very unfortunate, may actually have a, well, kind of a positive spin on things. So it's good to see that we're actually working with Region Ten. Also, we do, we partner with Region Ten on a number of other things. We partnered with Region Ten when we did our uh, COVID loans and our grant cycle through them. And they are a really great local resource for a lot of different things. So I'm really glad to see you guys working so closely with them.
Yeah, I think it'll be a good program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff have comments or reports they'd like to make? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And with that, we are adjourned.